We're here at the Danville Planning Commission Meeting. It's December 11th, and we don't want any stack-and-pack housing in Danville. We also want the Association of Bay Area Governments out of our town. This 2030 Plan that's being foisted on Danville and cities all over the Bay Area, it's a nine-Bay Area County cookie-cutter solution to create stack-and-pack housing everywhere next to mass transit. Now, Danville is not a transit-oriented town. We're not even within seven miles of a nearest BART station, but yet, they think they're going to reduce greenhouse gases and stop people from driving their cars by creating high-density housing everywhere in the downtown area over the next 20 years. We say no. We don't want that to happen, and we're here to voice our opinions.
More than 36 years ago, it was a nice, small town. Had county government then. A few years later, we decided we wanted to incorporate so that we could have local control and not be ruled by Contra Costa County. Now, we face a much greater threat of outside control. The nine-Bay Area Counties, unelected representatives, we had no option to vote for them, want to tell us what to do with our town. It's wrong, and I'm against it.
What I do object to is changing zoning without the okay of the voters and doing it so that real estate developers can come in and build higher density. I have a problem with that because I think there's no end to that.
I just returned from the Netherlands. I was there for three weeks, and I am reminded, I could not help making a comment to my cousin as we were driving through the street, that their streets, some of them are narrower than some of our back alleys, and the houses are very, very close together. Holland is overpopulated, and therefore, they don't have room to expand. We have the room here in America to live free, and we shouldn't be packed like sardines in a can.
Nobody really knows exactly what's going on here. The residents are not being told the full picture. As you have said, these are unelected officials that are trying to take control of the matters that should be settled by the residents, by their elected officials.
Yeah, I'm definitely concerned about the problems that could come about from having a transit priority project being part of Danville.
We have this up in Concord. We can see it up there in Shreve. You know, you've got the BART station, you've got this massive development of apartments up there, and here we have this cute little town which is nothing like Walnut Creek. We don't want to be like Walnut Creek. We want to keep the same character that we've had in Danville, which does not mean that we're going to turn into this big metropolis. In fact, the only transportation system we have is just the freeway over there.
Exactly.
It's not exactly a BART station.
And yes, we want to look after the environment and be stewards of the earth, but there's really an underlying current, an agenda here from the A-BAG organization, and you know, that agenda is being shoved down the throats of the resident here at Residence in Danville, and you know, we don't want it.
Safe open space Danville is opposed to this plan because it is opening all agricultural open space in Danville to residential development without the approval of the voters as required by Measure S, a ballot measure passed by 75% of Danville voters in 2000. The changes Danville's making to the 2010 general plan are apparently to circumvent that Measure S right to vote that voters are expecting and believe they have the legal right to have. We have our attorney here tonight, Stuart Flashman, who's going to be speaking to the Planning Commission, explaining why these changes violate both Measure S and state zoning and planning law.
We cannot just roll over to these socialists, you know, that are trying to really cripple our economy, trying to cripple capitalism, trying to cripple our freedoms and all. We've got to stand up to them. And even though, and even though they threaten to sue the cities if the cities don't go along with it, we just have to stand up to them.
Well, do you know that the RENA allocations have been, they've been using incorrect the old data from the Department of Finance, and they recently updated that data, and A-BAG didn't update their calculations? So...
Do I know that we did two, we did two letters from CCTA, that's the Contra Costa Transportation Authority, to A-BAG saying that these numbers that you're using are far too high for our area because we're not having the population that you're predicting. That did not, well, we sent this to MTC, but they have not responded by reducing those numbers yet. So, we're working on that, Heather.
Well, that's good. I mean, that's good news. I really appreciate it. Thank you for taking the time. So, that's Karen Stepper, and now, we're at the Danville Planning Commission Meeting. We're ready to go in, and we're going to be hearing a lot more comments about the general plan, about A-BAG, about the One Bay Area Plan, about how we'd like to have regional agencies like A-BAG out of our general plan and out of Danville altogether. And again, if you want to learn more about what's happening in Danville and all around the Bay Area with the One Bay Area Plan, go to citizenstownhall.org. We'll be hosting a town hall specifically for Danville on January 15th at 7:00 PM at 635 Old Orchard Drive in Danville at the Sycamore Clubhouse. Join us then.
Tonight's hearing is being conducted for the purpose of accepting testimony on the draft 2030 general plan and the draft sustainability action plan. This is the first of three meetings that are scheduled before the commission, followed by the January 8th meeting and the January 22nd meeting. So, there will be no decisions actually made this evening or actions taken tonight. We will be just accepting public testimony and questions from both the audience and from the planning commissioners of the staff and of the consultant with respect to the general plan and the sustainability action plan. So, let me take a few minutes to run through the meeting format this evening so that any of you who've not been to a meeting will understand the process. We're going to begin by hearing a presentation from the consultant. He'll be explaining, the presentation will present an overview and highlight what's in the draft general plan and the sustainability action plan so that we'll have a good overview of it. Then, we'll move right into our open, opening of our public hearing. If there are questions of the consultant from the Planning Commission, planning commissioners will have an opportunity to ask questions, and then it will come before the public. After the public testimony tonight, we'll take as many people as we can. It can be a long evening, and we're happy to stay here and hear everyone. We'll listen to the public testimony, after which time, it comes back to the, to the planning staff and to the consultant to be able to answer your questions. So, so that you'll know the process, if you have questions related to the, to anything on this evening's agenda, staff will collect those questions and we'll, we'll keep a running tally or, or other things that need to be clarified. We'll take all the testimony, and then it will come back before staff to clarify or give further information for any of the questions. Then, it will come back to the Planning Commission for some preliminary comments. We will then defer to the next meeting on January 8th for additional testimony on these So, a little bit of the ground rules. The commission's interested in hearing from all of you and everyone who wishes to speak tonight, so in order to be as effective as we can, I'd like to ask for your assistance, please. If you wish to speak, please fill out a yellow speaker card. There's some outside, and there should be some still on the table here. Pass it up to the front of the room. You can or cannot, it's up to you whether you choose to put your address. The benefit to putting your address is that then we can send you further notifications or clear other communications on this item. This will allow me and the call, to call up, my colleague here is going to assist me in calling the speakers so that I can facilitate the meeting. And we'll probably call three of you in a row so that people can collect themselves, and we won't have a long delay so that we can get as much in the way of testimony as possible without delays. Again, I'll remind some of you who've come in late, there's additional seating over in this anteroom. You're welcome to, to sit. When I call your name, if you'd please step up to the podium, and if you'd be so kind as to speak directly into the microphone and adjust it as your height allows, because then the people in the back of the room can hear you better. Otherwise, it may be difficult, and it is being recorded, so, so that we can get all of your comments. As I mentioned, staff will be recording them as well. Please direct your comments to us, the commissioners. We're the ones interested in your testimony, and we will, believe me, we've spent many, many dozens of hours reading this document and learning of what's in it. So, the more we get from you in the way of considerate comments, the more I would appreciate it. We'd like to offer you the same level of respect that I hope you would give us, so I would appreciate it. As we're here tonight to hear what you have to say and listen to as many speakers as possible, we'll, we'll try to move this meeting along, but also offer everyone the opportunity to speak. Depending upon how lengthy tonight's proceedings go, I may at some point later tonight call a short break, but we'll play that by ear and see how the evening goes. If any of us leaves the dais for some reason, you'll know. Just need a break. If you have cell phones with you at this time, I politely request that you maybe turn them off or on quiet mode and silence them, and if you would be so kind as to avoid side conversations because it is very distracting, even for the people who are coming up to speak, so that would be very helpful. Again, this is the first hearing on the general plan, and we'll have the next opportunity on January 8th, but as I say, we'll do our best to get you all in here. I appreciate the level of frustration from some who came to the last meeting and were hoping to speak to this item, so the presentation that will be presented tonight, I hope will give you some of the information that some were hoping to have received at that meeting. And then, finally, I'd like to say, all of us up here as commissioners are volunteers. You know, we are your commission. We absolutely are. Some of us have grown up in Danville, some of us have raised our families, some of us have our parents who also live in town. This is our community, just as it is yours, and we treasure it. We have a passion for it, or we wouldn't be up here. So, we are very interested in what everybody has to say. Everyone's opinion is very valued, so I wanted to preface my comments by that. So, without further ado, I would like to hand the, the meeting over to Barry Miller, the consultant, who will give us an overview of the general plan and the sustainability action plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Oberkashir. Is this microphone on?
Doesn't sound like it.
It doesn't sound like it. Okay, how is this?
Can you hear in the back?
No. I don't think it's on. I think you're standing up there. Okay. All right, this one works. Good evening, commissioners and members of the public. I'm Barry Miller, consulting city planner, and I've been working with the town of Danville on this general plan revision for the last two years. I was also one of the primary authors and assistant project manager on the general plan update in 1998 and 1999, the current general plan. In tonight's presentation, we'll walk you through the general plan update process and go over the reasons the town is updating its plan. We'll go over the plan's highlights, focusing on what's new and different in this plan compared to the last one. We'll address some of the issues that came up at our last meeting on November 27th, including Measure S on the housing opportunity sites, and we will go over next steps and the project schedule. Before we get into the presentation, I wanted to recap where we are in the process. The town began updating its general plan four years ago in 2008. The first step in this process was an update of the housing element, which is required by the State of California for all cities and counties. The housing element includes the town's policies for meeting its current and future housing needs, including the needs of seniors, persons with disabilities, and low and moderate income households. The town's housing element was completed in 2009 and certified by the state in 2010. In 2010, the town moved on to updating the other parts of the general plan, addressing topics like land use and development, transportation, natural hazards, public facilities, and conservation. The first step in this process was to factually update all of the information in the plan. The last general plan was done in 1998 and 99, so the information was 12 years old. The factual update brought all the information in the plan up to date so that it reflects current conditions. In 2011 and 2012, the focus shifted to the general plan policies. The previous plan had a horizon year of 2010. In other words, it covered a period from 1999 to 2010. The town updated the policies through this process to guide decisions about growth for the next 15 to 20 years. This was done through a series of 25 joint study sessions between the Town Council and the Planning Commission. The meetings allowed for a detailed overview of each chapter and line-by-line edits of the existing plan, including new policies. An environmental impact report was completed during this time period. The EIR was initiated in May 2011 and released for public review in October 2012. All of the council-commission study sessions were public meetings advertised on the town's website and posted in accordance with town requirements. In addition, the town mailed 16,500 postcards, one to every household in Danville, to advertise the November 27th meeting on the EIR, and again, to advertise this hearing tonight and those that are scheduled for the next few months. We're going to bring this slide up again later in the presentation, but once again, this is the timeline for public hearings that are going on now. The first hearing on November 27th focused on the EIR. Tonight, we're focusing on the general plan and the sustainability plan, which is a separate document. We'll be having a third hearing on January 8th to consider responses to comments on the EIR and allow the public to weigh in on the general plan issues. The commission will take time at each of these meetings to consider public input. On January 22nd, if the commission feels it is ready, it will act on a resolution to forward the plan and EIR to the Town Council for additional public hearings. The commission can use that resolution to make changes and edits to the general plan based on the public testimony and their own deliberations. The earliest the Town Council will consider the plan is in February when they'll hold a hearing to take public input. The council has another hearing scheduled for March, and they will hold additional hearings as needed. The plan may be further edited and changed through that process. Ultimately, the council will pass a resolution adopting the general plan inclusive of any changes made through the public process. So, we're going to start with some general plan basics. What is this document, and why does the town need to prepare it? All cities and towns in California are required by state law to prepare a general plan for their physical development. The plan is focused on the growth of the community over a 15- to 20-year period. It provides the basis for zoning, capital improvement programs, transportation decisions, resource management plans, and other decisions about Danville's future. The general plan describes where we are today and where we want to be in the year 2030. The requirements for the plan's contents are set by the state government code. The general plan includes text, and it includes maps. The maps show features like planned land uses, parks, and areas subject to fire and flood hazards. The plan includes goals, policies, and action programs that are used to help guide future development decisions. The plan is comprehensive. This means it covers all topics relating to development, from water quality to traffic to earthquake safety. It also means it covers the entire town and not just one small part of it. As I mentioned, the general plan covers all areas in the town of Danville. You can see a map of the town boundaries here. The general plan does not cover Alamo, Black Hawk, Diablo, or other areas to the north and south. It does include general policies for the unincorporated subdivisions along Camino Tassahera east of town, such as Betancourt Ranch and Alamo Creek, which you can see on this map. However, the town only has direct jurisdiction over land within its corporate boundaries. It's important to consider the general plan in the context of previous plans for Danville. The town has had a general plan since it first incorporated in 1982. In fact, local control over planning and land use decisions were a major force behind incorporation. For the first five years of Danville's existence, the town operated under a plan prepared by Contra Costa County that covered the entire San Ramon Valley. In 1987, the town adopted its first plan. This plan looked 18 years into the future to 2005. It envisioned 4,000 additional housing units in town, mostly in the Sycamore Valley and in Camino Tassahera area. That development took pretty much, took place pretty much as the general plan described it. In 1999, the town updated that plan and prepared its second general plan, looking out 11 years to the year 2010. What you're considering now is the third general plan. Once it's adopted in 2013, it will guide Danville's development for the next 17 years out to 2030. Here's a quote from the 2005 general plan adopted 25 years ago. "A major theme of both the 1987 and the 1999 plan was preserving Danville's small-town character even as growth took place. Many of the policies in the plan spoke to how that would be accomplished. Like the two plans before it, this general plan update includes policies that reflect the objective of the 1982 incorporation drive, which is to accommodate a limited amount of growth while preserving Danville's character." The previous plans for Danville are an important part of why the town looks and feels the way it does today. They've helped keep Danville a great place and made it one of the most attractive communities in the Bay Area. The plan emphasizes preservation of the town's residential scale and character. It seeks to preserve the things that make Danville unique and different from other communities in the county. There has always been, and there continues to be, a major emphasis in the plan on open space preservation, protection of hillsides and ridgelines, enhancement of the downtown area as the center of the community, and preservation of Danville's historic resources. Many of the regulations and ordinances that govern development and conservation in Danville today originated in the general plan. Many of our public facilities and parks are here because they were identified as priorities in previous general plans. For the last 25 years, the general plan has shaped the way Danville has grown. This pie chart illustrates the composition of land uses in the town today. About 40% of Danville consists of open space, parks, and agriculture. Another 40% consists of single-family homes. About 12% consists of streets and rights-of-way. Only 3% of the town is commercially developed, and about 2% consists of multifamily residential areas. The proposed general plan would maintain these percentages in the future. The town is updating its general plan now primarily because the existing plan had a horizon of 2010, and that year is already behind us. Our existing general plan was adopted in 1999. Its information is based on the 1990 census, which is now 22 years old. In addition, the current plan does not reflect all of the plans and programs that have been adopted in the last 12 years, like the Parks, Recreation, and Art Strategic Plan, our Emergency Management Plan, and the Downtown Parking Management Program. The current plan also does not reflect development that's taken place in the town over the last 12 years. It also doesn't reflect recent state laws and mandates, or the changes that have taken place in the way people work, live, and communicate. It doesn't reflect changes in technology, changes in the housing market, or demographic changes like the aging of the community. The update provides an opportunity to keep the plan relevant, effective, and legally adequate. This slide shows the organization of the general plan. There are four major chapters. The planning and development chapter covers community development, growth management, economic development, and historic preservation. The mobility chapter covers transportation, including cars, bikes, walking, buses, and issues such as parking and traffic safety. The public facilities chapter covers civic buildings, public services, parks, and utilities. The resources and hazards chapter covers natural resource conservation, open space protection, environmental hazards, and sustainability. Each chapter includes a section on implementation describing the measures the town uses to carry out its policies, such as zoning and development review. The plan is primarily a factual update. What we mean by that is that the data in the plan is being brought up to the current date. Most of the policies in the existing plan are being carried forward. The overarching vision of the plan and its underlying theme to maintain Danville as a high-quality community and preserve its character is not changing. The major changes in the plan are listed here and are highlighted in the slides that I'm about to go through. On the subject of land use, the plan incorporates language on Measure S, which had not been passed in 1999 when the plan was last done. It identifies opportunity sites for new housing and development, and it updates language on a number of locations in town which are referred to as special concern areas. It includes a new growth management element, which is required by Contra Costa County, and it includes new sections on economic development, mobility, and sustainability. And as I mentioned, I'll be going over each of these. One of the most important parts of the general plan is the land use map. This map uses about 20 different colors to distinguish different allowable uses and densities. The map provides the basis for the town zoning map and guides the way the land can be used. There are nine residential categories on this map, which indicate the kind of housing that can be built, for instance, single-family versus multifamily, and the density, or number of acres, number of units per acre that can be built. There are six non-residential categories covering different types of commercial development. There's a category for public facilities, and there are three categories for open space, including parks and recreation, agriculture, and general open space. In the next few slides, we're going to highlight the major changes in the general plan related to land use. First, the general plan incorporates language adopted by Danville voters through Measure S in 2000. It describes the way Measure S has been implemented in practice over the last 12 years. To recap, Measure S requires voter approval to change the general plan designations for land with any, within any of these three categories, parks and recreation, general open space, and agriculture. The map does not propose changes, the plan does not propose changes to the map that would affect these designations. Second, the plan identifies housing opportunity sites. We have a few slides explaining what these are and the reasons they're included. Third, we have updated the text for some of the special concern areas. These are specific locations in Danville, sometimes containing one property and sometimes larger areas with multiple properties, where additional direction is needed to guide planning decisions. Danville's general plan has provided direction for such areas going all the way back to the 1987 plan. Let's start with Measure S. This map shows all lands in Danville that are subject to Measure S. Park and recreation areas are shown in the greenish-gray color. General open space areas are in light green, and agricultural lands are shown in the reddish- gray color. Let's go over each of these categories. The park and recreation category consists entirely of publicly-owned land. This land has no development potential and will remain as open space in perpetuity. The general open space category includes some lands that are publicly owned and some that are private, but with development rights that have been traded up or given up as part of, traded away or given up as part of previous subdivision approvals. These areas also will remain open space in perpetuity. The remaining category consists of agricultural lands, which you see here. These are properties in private ownership that are subject to general plan policies and zoning regulations, which set minimum parcel requirements. Danville's general plan has always acknowledged that the agricultural lands had a limited amount of residential development potential and supported transferring this potential to the flattest parts of the property in areas closest to roads and urban services. This has been the town's policy for the last 25 years. The practical effective Measure S is to limit residential development on agricultural land to less than 60 units townwide. What the general plan does is to articulate the town's current policy, which is to cluster this potential in a way that preserves hillsides and ridgelines and allows the bulk of the sites to be preserved as permanent open space. In the past, this has been done using the P1 zoning designation. The special concern area language for the agricultural areas provides additional direction on how this is to be done. The objective is to maintain as much open space as possible, conserve natural resources, and avoid hazardous areas while respecting private property rights. The general plan does not increase the allowable density of property subject to Measure S. What it does do is provide direction as to where the limited number of homes permitted under Measure S should be located. Here's an example of how this has worked in practice in Danville since the approval of Measure S in 2000. This is the Elworthy Ranch property on the west side of Danville, a 459-acre piece of property that has an agricultural general plan designation. Before Measure S, developers could ask for a general plan amendment to allow higher densities than would be permitted under an agriculture designation. What you're seeing here is the original subdivision proposal that was submitted for this site in the 1990s before Measure S. The original application would have placed 224 homes on the site, including single-family lots all the way up to the ridgeline. This application was withdrawn after town staff recommended denial. After Measure S, the property owner realized that asking for a general plan amendment would require asking for voter approval. The original proposal was dropped, and owners looked for a solution that was consistent with the general plan policies and Measure S requirements. Using the P1 or planned district zone, the development's potential of 97 units was transferred to the lower portion of the site along San Ramon Valley Boulevard. You can see on the slide the area that was ultimately permitted for development. The project was approved in 2008 and is now under construction. Approximately 96% of the property, or 442 acres, will be preserved as permanent open space. The general plan would support continuation of this approach for calculating development potential and planning the few agricultural parcels remaining in the town. Including language on this topic in the general plan is important to protect private property rights while still achieving the town's conservation and open space goals. The next subject, and one which was the focus of much of the testimony at the last meeting, is the housing opportunity sites. To recap, the State of California requires all cities and counties to designate land for a variety of housing types. This includes housing for This includes housing for seniors and people with special needs. As a benchmark, a low-income household in Contra Costa County is defined as earning less than $63,350 a year for a household of four. State law assigns the responsibility for determining each community's fair share of housing needs to the regional councils of government. In the Bay Area, that council is the Association of Bay Area Governments, or A-BAG. This process has been going on for over 25 years and is called the Regional Housing Needs Allocation, or RENA. When you hear that term, RENA, that's what it's referring to. There are 100 cities and nine counties in the A-BAG region, and through its membership in A-BAG, the town can have a say in what its fair share assignment is. The town has the right to object to its assignment and appeal to the A-BAG Board. If a city is not a member of A-BAG, their fair share of regional housing needs is assigned by the state. Cities may opt out of A-BAG, but they are not permitted to opt out of the fair share process. Our goal, the town's goal, in participating in this process is, number one, to ensure that Danville's assignment is reasonable and not excessive, and, number two, to address this process in a way that upholds the character of the community and meets the needs of Danville residents. Some important facts about this process as it relates to the general plan. The town is required to show that it has sufficient land for future housing construction, but it is not required to build the housing or to ensure that it gets built. The plan designates sites where new housing could occur in the future, but it does not approve specific projects or developments. Any future development on any of these sites would be privately funded and market-driven. And regardless of housing type, any future development would be subject to environmental review and the town's planning and design standards. Most likely, that would mean that future EIRs and Planning Commission hearings would be needed to consider future proposals. In addition, no one will be required to build anything on these sites. The existing uses may remain indefinitely. Some of these properties may develop with market-rate housing, some may develop with commercial uses, and some may stay exactly as they are. This slide puts Danville's projected growth in perspective. In 2010, this is as of the census, the town had 42,040 residents. As of 2012, in other words, now, the State Department of Finance estimated the population was 42,215, an increase of about 200 people in two years. If the town made no changes at all to its general plan map, its projected population would be around 44,660 in 2030, or an increase of about 2,400 people compared to today. With the general plan map changes, we'd be looking at a projected population of 46,810 residents. And I will add, this is a worst-case scenario required for our environmental review, which presumes that every property in the town where housing is allowed develops at the maximum possible density permitted. Even in that case, the town's growth would be 11% over a 20-year period. This is about half the growth rate that Danville experienced during the 80s and 90s. It's a slightly higher rate of growth than what's been experienced over the last 10 years, when the entire Bay Area grew at a slow pace due to the economy. The rate of growth projected for Danville is much slower than what is projected for all of the communities in the Tri-Valley, including San Ramon, Dublin, Pleasanton, and Livermore. To accommodate future growth, this general plan proposes changes on 14 sites in the town. Taken together, these sites add up to around 35 acres. The town does not have to change all 14 sites. The purpose of selecting this number was to have some leeway in what was ultimately included. Part of the Planning Commission process, now and next month, is to determine which sites may be removed from consideration. At minimum, it is required to show that at least, show at least 7.9 acres as multifamily residential at a density of 25 to 35 units per acre, and 1.7 acres at 20 to 25 units per acre. This is the amount needed to meet the regional fair share housing allocation and the state mandate to show that we have land in our community to potentially support multifamily development in the future. The sites have been selected to preserve single-family neighborhoods and maintain the character of the town. Some of them are vacant, and some are already, already developed. For the most part, they're already designated for offices, commercial uses, or residential uses. The general plan update is the public forum to consider which of these sites should be changed. It's a chance for the public and the Planning Commission to consider the merits of each site. The housing opportunity sites are generally located along Interstate 80, primarily in and around downtown Danville. They were chosen for their proximity to major transportation corridors. As I mentioned earlier, they're selected to preserve single-family neighborhoods. The list of potential sites has already been narrowed through a public process that started four years ago. There were originally 27 sites on the list. That number has been reduced to 14 through public input and Town Council Planning Commission study sessions. The type of housing actually built on these sites will vary. Here's an example of what was developed on a housing opportunity site during a previous housing element cycle. This is Stony Brook, a development of single-family homes on small lots. The density here is 13 units per acre. Here's another example. This is the Preserves at the Iron Horse Trail on Fustoria Way. This development is 22 units per acre. So what the general plan is saying is we need 1.7 acres out of the 11,600 acres that make up the town of Danville to be re-designated so they're suitable for development of this type and character. This is the Sycamore Place development on Laurel Drive. The occupants are primarily very low-income seniors. This is another example of the type of affordable housing that could be constructed on the housing opportunity sites. The density here is 27 units per acre. So we're looking at finding 7.9 acres in the town of Danville suitable for development of this character. This development could be affordable, or it could be market-rate, or a combination of both. Another change to the general plan is that it would designate downtown Danville as what's called a priority development area, or a PDA. This is an area mapped by the town to show regional agencies where most of our development will be focused during the coming years. It does not change the land use map or have an effect on how zoning will be handled in the future. The idea behind the PDA is to focus new development near existing services and transportation corridors rather than locating it in single-family neighborhoods or on the edges of town. The PDA designation will allow the town to be more competitive in receiving federal funds for road maintenance and improvement from the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, or MTC. Funding for transportation is very competitive, and MTC is consciously directing its funds to those communities with designated PDAs. Without a PDA in Danville, the town is less likely to receive these funds. Next, the plan includes revised text for most of the special concern areas, and I promise I'm almost done with this presentation. You can see the locations of the special concern areas on this map. As I mentioned earlier, there are areas, these are areas where a little bit of extra direction is required in the plan to manage future land use decisions. A few of these areas are open spaces, and a few are developed areas with the potential for change. The 1985 plan also included a section on special concern areas, and so did the 1999 plan. The new plan updates the text as appropriate. For the McGee Ranch property, which is number two on this map, the text in the 1999 plan has been carried forward verbatim since it still reflects the town's position on the property. Moving on to the other topics in the general plan, another change is that we have added what's called a mobility element. This is a chapter of the general plan that expresses the town's policies on topics like roads, bike paths, sidewalks, and public transportation. This also looks at issues like parking, traffic safety, and managing traffic around school campuses. The previous general plan also addressed these topics, but as a subset of the public facilities chapter, so it's now its own chapter. The plan also includes an updated growth management element. The town is required by Contra Costa County to have a growth management element in its plan in order to receive its share of the one-half cent sales tax that's collected under Measure J. A few years ago, the county changed the rules for what's in a growth management element, and the town is complying with the county requirements through this update. As we noted earlier, there's a greater focus in the plan on infill development in the center of town rather than on the perimeter, and there's a new land use category created for the higher-density multifamily sites. This land use designation is used for some of the housing opportunity sites, and also for existing apartment and condominium developments in Danville that are built at these densities. For the first time, the general plan includes a section on economic development. This section looks at ways to encourage shopping in Danville, providing quality retail choices for residents, and generating revenues through sales taxes. This section also focuses on some of the unique aspects of Danville's economy, including its high rate of entrepreneurship and opportunities for creating incubators and shared office spaces in downtown Danville. The element looks at ways to keep Danville a business-friendly community. There's also a new section of the plan on sustainability. It looks at ways that Danville can reduce waste and preserve natural resources. It covers topics like recycling, green buildings, community gardens, solar energy, and water conservation. In addition, the town has prepared a sustainability action plan as part of this process. This is a separate report. It is not part of the general plan, which shows how the town of Danville and its residents can support the statewide effort to reduce greenhouse gas emissions in California. Most communities in Contra Costa County have already adopted a plan like this, but Danville has yet to do so. Two important points about the sustainability action plan. First, it focuses on practices and programs that are already underway, including Danville's recycling program, its street smarts and traffics programs, and its network of bike lanes, including the Iron Horse Trail. The town of Danville is already taking a lot of initiative to be greener and reduce waste, and this is an opportunity to take credit for that. Second, the sustainability action plan is entirely incentive-based. There are no mandatory requirements or standards that will be imposed through this process. Before I close, I want to once again recap the schedule for the process. Tonight's hearing is intended as an opportunity for the public to weigh in on the general plan. We have a lot of speakers here tonight, and we will be noting all comments. As time allows, this is also a chance for the Planning Commission to weigh in on the issues addressed by the plan, including the policies, the housing sites, and the sustainability action plan. We will have another hearing on January 8th, and at that time, there'll be more time for public testimony and a discussion of the responses to comments on the plan and EIR. The commission may discuss changes to the plan tonight or at the January hearing. Our hope is to bring a resolution for commission action on January 22nd, so that this proposal or a modified version of it may be brought to the Town Council in February. That concludes the presentation. I will now turn it over to our town manager, Joe Calabrego, for additional comments.
Thank you. Thank you, Barry. Thank you, Commission. And thank you to all of you who are here this evening to involve yourself in this process and show that your concerns for the direction of our, of our community, our general plan. As someone who has been blessed to live and work in this town for over 20 years, raise children here, and so on, I can appreciate as well as anyone in this room how important it is for our general plan to capture and articulate this community's vision for itself. And it's interesting for me, because I was here in part of the very first general plan that was prepared for the town of Danville back in the late 1980s. And I can tell you, based on what we've seen in, as part of this process, that Danville's vision hasn't wavered or changed in 30 years, and Barry touched on those highlights. Preserving and reinforcing our unique small-town character, the quality of life, the history, and the natural setting that we have in this community is why people live here, and we don't want these values compromised. We don't want to see this community turned into something else. From an implementation standpoint, it's important for me to point out that the town has worked very proactively over the years to uphold this vision, and that's been done through specific plans, development standards, design guidelines, and review processes that are second to none in the Bay Area. And that involves a lot of community input, and it's why we're here and anxious to hear what you have to say tonight. Preparing and adopting this general plan, as has been the case with our previous plans, is typically a two-to-three-year process. It's not something that isn't deliberate or taken lightly. Now, what I also want to touch on is the fact that local control, which is so important to all of us, is one component of this process. Because much of what goes on, and much of the growth and change that affects this community, has and continues to occur around us, and it's beyond our direct control. We're in a growing region. We're surrounded by communities whose growth agendas perhaps have been different than ours. And so, over the past 20 years, when we look back on that experience and we look at some massive housing developments like Doherty Valley, for example, or Alamo Creek, that have added 14,000 units adjacent to our boundaries, I don't have to tell any of you who live out on the eastern edge of town, if you're out there every morning watching the inbound traffic, what that means. A second point that I need to make and underscore is that whether we appreciate it or not, the state and regional entities in my time here at the town have become increasingly involved at the local level. Danville has... Go ahead.
I agree.
I don't disagree with that. Danville, I should point out, though, has been, I believe, very proactive and very consistent in trying to deal with this dynamic. State laws evolve or change on almost an annual basis, and part of what we're compelled to do is navigate through these requirements so that we can protect the town's best interest and retain that special community character and identity. And that has to do with the state. It has to do with, it has to do with A-BAG. Because since the late 1960s, states have been mandated to have housing elements as part of their general plans, and since the early 1980s, the state has been requiring cities to accommodate what they refer to as their fair share of projected growth. In the Bay Area, that occurs through A-BAG. And I see signs, "Get out of A-BAG" in the back of the room. I have to tell you... I have to underscore the fact that membership in A-BAG is what allows the town to represent Danville's best interests and influence this process to keep these numbers as low as they can be. If we don't do this, those numbers will be assigned to us directly by the state of California, and the town won't have input in that process. This is not, this is not a new process. This is the fourth housing cycle that the town has been through. Let me also address issues that have been raised with respect to One Bay Area and the Sustainable Community Strategy, because that's been raised in comments that have been made and written over the last few weeks as well. These are efforts to link future growth with regional transportation plans. These are efforts that are heavily stilted toward urban centers, and Danville hasn't been a fan of that process. We've raised issues with A-BAG. We've raised issues with MTC. We've challenged the feasibility of the regional forecasts that are being used for growth. We've advocated eliminating requirements to spend 70% of future transportation funds in priority development areas. We've advocated exempting local roadway maintenance funds, because potentially, those will be tied to that as well. And we've asserted that we believe that similar results could be received by concentrating more housing in urbanized areas, not in suburbs, like Contra Costa County or specifically Danville. We haven't been in the majority. The PDA that's proposed in the draft general plan, to be clear, has a net size that's less than 3% of the town, and it is in and around our downtown and our commercial areas. Why have we done that? Because if additional multifamily housing is going to be built in this community, we believe it should be closer to downtown, to shopping, to bus service, to the freeway, and so on, not farther out in our established residential neighborhoods, and this would be the case whether or not there was a PDA designated. But we also have to make the point that there are current and future transportation and other funding implications here, and the town does not want to simply forego any and all funding opportunities, especially those that we may not be aware of in the future. With respect to housing, I think it's important to dovetail onto what Barry said and just underscore the fact that the responsibility that the town has is to designate sites and not to build housing. Our property owners retain all of their property rights. They are not required to change the existing use of their property, and only they can initiate the process to develop their property. This is an entirely market-driven process, and it always has been. When we talk about examples of housing that's affordable in Danville... When we talk about examples of housing that's affordable in Danville, it's housing that is in large part affordable by design, and it has to make economic sense for a builder based on the town's standards, land values, and so on. These homes are built to the same high design standards as all of the rest of the development in Danville, and it hasn't changed the character of the community. And I would just underscore that when we go back to 1990, we've talked about this is primarily a residential community. Well over ninety percent of our homes in 1990 were categorized as single-family housing. Today, in 2012, it's still well over ninety percent, and that retains the residential character of the community. Lastly, I want to underscore what Barry said about open space and open space preservation. This is near and dear to my heart because when I was a part of the planning staff and all of the planning was done in Sycamore Valley, you drive out, you look at the way that development out there has been clustered on the valley floor, the ridge lines have been preserved. The town has been a very active proponent and a leader with respect to open space preservation and ensuring that the various natural features of this community are preserved and retained. It's one of the reasons that the town sponsored Measure S in 2000 and the voters approved it. To be clear, Measure S applies to the designation on three land use categories: open space, agricultural, parks and recreation. Those are three separate categories. Together, they make up forty percent of our land use area. But the point that I need to make is that I've heard reference to agricultural open space. That's not a category that exists under our general plan. Open space are lands that are publicly owned or covered by scenic easements that preclude future development. Agricultural lands, as Barry indicated, are a separate category. They're privately owned. There are three hundred acres of land remaining in this community that fall into that category that retain limited development potential under Measure S. That potential amounts to sixty or fewer homes. There's no intensification of this that's proposed in our general plan. Our voters would have to approve any change to this, and the draft general plan proposes no changes to Measure S. So, thank you for your courtesy. Thank you for listening. Madam Chair, that concludes our comments.
Thank you very much.